Do we have a...
Madam Clerk, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Uh, wait, is this much better sound than we had out there in the old building? It seems like I can hear even here myself.
I can hear you now.
Yeah, you can hear me too?
I can hear you.
Well, that's the real test, Mr. Looper can hear, but we... That's good. All right, sounds good. All right, well, we're gonna call to order the special call meeting workshop to have the discussion regarding multifamily and high-density residential zoning districts. Let me do the roll call first, make sure everyone's here and it's recorded on our mics. Mr. Looper?
Here.
Mr. Deloach?
Here.
Mr. Kiefer? Phil's not here?
Nope.
Okay.
Not here.
Uh, Mr. Burdette?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Okay, we'll note that Mr. Kiefer's not here, but we'll go ahead and start since it's a workshop and hopefully he'll be with us shortly. So I'm gonna turn this over to whoever's gonna take us through the R1, R3, and all the zoning that we've been having our consultants work on. Is that gonna be you, Ms. Teresa, to start us off, or...
Uh, I can start you off. We're waiting on the link to send to the consultant who can talk through some of the slides.
All right, while you wait on that link, I'll just say to the board, you know, one of the things we had looked at, we've got a moratorium right now on density construction, and what we're gonna try to do is work through restructuring our rezoning, R3 and R6, those things that are density. We've even talked about going to strictly PUDs. I think you mentioned that the last time we were together, moving away from those. But I think what we'll do tonight is see if we can hear from our consultant, come up with any thoughts, concerns, recommendations we have as we go through this. Because my thought is, is if we can maybe keep these zonings, it doesn't mean we have to approve them till we get our comp plan. When you look at our comp plan, we're gonna restructure where we're gonna have density and not have density so people can plan. But I think what this would do is when you go into a PUD, which is gonna put several of these together, it gives the developers an idea of what we're looking for. They don't have to come in here and guess how much green space, how much density per acre are we looking for for housing, apartments, commercial, or whatever. So I like the idea of possibly still having the zonings, and that will give our developers something to go by, even though we may still lean more toward the PUDs in the future as well. Just a thought. So I'm delayed long enough. Are y'all ready? They got the information up, ready to review with us?
We're just sending her the link now. There was a problem with the original Zoom link. So she'll pop up there and the presentation will, should be on that board.
Teresa, did you wanna make any comments before we're waiting?
Sure. The PowerPoint is a very, very brief overview of the project that we're working with the consultants on, the comp plan and also the zoning ordinance update. And then it goes into a little more specific about the changes that are proposed, like we discussed at the last board meeting, where they're sort of scattered throughout. There's, you know, improvements on the definitions and the clarification of the definitions, which is very helpful to staff, but also the density of each, in each category is discussed briefly. So it's really a matter of how much, how much in depth you want to go on each one, and as to whether, if you're retaining all of the current zoning districts, then, you know, to fine tune them and make them all very useful for everyone, developers and staff alike. And that's what we'd all like.
Will they be sharing where they gathered their data from, surrounding counties, cities, so forth, that already dealt with the things we're dealing with in growth? Be interesting to know where this information came from, you know, as far as the recommendations.
Yeah, I'm sure Sarah will be able to...
This is what, this is what Port Wentworth's doing, Chatham, you know, Bryan, whatever.
Yeah, Sarah, who will be calling in, and Denise Grabowski, who's here onsite, will be able to answer any questions they provided for the revisions.
Okay. Anybody on the board have any opening comments related to this workshop that might help them know what we're looking to accomplish?
Clarity.
Clarity, yep.
That'd be the biggest improvement, for sure. Only two words that come to mind.
All right, we about ready?
Denise will start while we're waiting on Sarah. Denise is working in the process, so she can start and take you through the initial slides.
All right, Ms. Denise, come on up and start helping us understand the future of zoning in this county.
Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Denise Grabowski. I am the owner and principal of Symbiosity, which is an urban planning firm based in Savannah. So my work really focuses in this area, and I've been working in this area for about 25 years, doing this type of work. And so it's a pleasure to be working on this project. I'm working with Sarah Gould, who is based in North Carolina with SNME, and she took the lead on a lot of the revisions that have, that you've seen before you. But we have discussed them and reviewed them, and so certainly happy to talk through those. Some of the specific questions she might have to answer, but I can certainly at least provide some groundwork about our conversation this afternoon. And what we thought might be helpful is first, just to kind of walk you through this process and what to expect overall. So just an overview of the project summary, a status, a little bit about our public engagement, and then really, obviously, the focus on the multifamily ordinance. So with this project, we are updating a portion of your conference of plan that really focuses on the land use. So looking at your future land use as well as your character areas, which are really important in providing kind of that big-picture overview of the vision of the county and how that vision is manifested through your ordinances. So that's kind of, we start with this big-picture look, and then the zoning ordinance is really where we get into the details of how the development and the work around the county can manifest that vision. So the land development code is really where that happens. So you can think of the land development code as one of the tools in your toolbox as you work to grow into the vision that you have for the county. So we held our first stakeholder meeting in December. It was well-attended by a diverse group of stakeholders. We had a lot of representatives from the development community as well as nonprofit organizations, and we will continue to meet with that stakeholder group throughout the process. We have our first public workshop that is scheduled for February 2nd, I believe, at 6:00 PM. We have a website that has been established as well as a survey. So we'll have a number of surveys throughout the process so that we can make sure that we're reaching out to the community and providing opportunities for the community to engage and provide their feedback. So we'll be looking kind of next steps at the character area map, and your character area is really kind of defined. We're used to thinking about land use in terms of residential, commercial, industrial, but that really doesn't get to the nuance and to the character of your community. And so a character area is a way to really better articulate the way in which different types of land uses are developed so that they can ensure, again, that the character is in keeping with the vision for Effingham County. Then we'll look at recommendations for your conference of plan and land development code updates and our second public workshop and stakeholder meeting. And we are doing this a little bit out of order as far as looking at the multifamily ordinance, but also understand that this is an issue that is of particular, you know, interest to you, and you have some several developments that really are driving the timeline of this. But I say that simply to say that we will be continuing in this process. So the discussion that we have today and any changes that you make right now, there's still the opportunity to continue to have discussions and maybe get into some more robust issues if we need to do that as we continue along that process. Uh, this is just an engage, a picture of our first meeting. We held that both in person, in person as well as virtually. And as I mentioned, our next workshop will be February 8th, and certainly hope that you can attend and share that with your constituents. So I will pause there. Any questions about kind of the general overview or the process that we are in? If not, I will go ahead and jump into the multifamily ordinance.
Do we know if we have something?
You see one yet?
Okay.
So, but it's your firm that's also helping us with our comp plan reworking?
Yes, sir.
Which we have a lot of interest in getting some public input into that. Do you know about when that public input, or how far along are we gonna be before we start doing that?
So we have just, I believe we are in the process of launching the website, so that should be going live here anytime now. That will also include that survey. And that meeting that we're having February 8th, that will really be our first kind of big public engagement opportunity. We're gonna do press releases. We will work, we will work with our stakeholder advisory committee to encourage them to reach out to their colleagues. Certainly hope that y'all will help us in getting the word out, because we would love to have a really strong attendance at that meeting as well as with our online engagement. And the online platform is very interactive, so people can leave their comments either in text, they can put things on a map. So it's a really engaging online platform that will be part of the project.
Quick question. How do you navigate the viewpoints that are just totally biased? I mean, if you have one neighborhood, "We don't want any growth." Developers, "We wanna grow like crazy," you know. How do you meet in the middle? How do you, I mean, you know, you can have public workshops and there'll be one or two people that really give good input. And you have same thing with developers and everything else. And then you have huge amount of the other part of the public that are just mad because we're getting bigger, or their roads are, it's taking me five minutes longer to get to work.
Right.
How do you separate that and do things that are good for everybody?
Well, that is the million-dollar question, and that's part of our job is to work through that. So if you think about, you know, the input that we typically see in a process like this is not unlike a bell curve, where you will have people at each extreme. So you will have the, you know, the extremes that you just mentioned. But what we find is, for the most part, we are able to find a point of consensus. And consensus means everybody may not 100% agree on everything, but it is a solution that we can live with. And the other thing that we hope to do, in particular through your development codes, is look for opportunities to not only regulate what can and can't be done, but also opportunities for incentives. So for example, if there is something the community wants, really wants to see, but you as a board of commissioners don't feel comfortable making something a requirement, are there opportunities to make it an incentive instead where it's actually more attractive for the development community, and the community gets what they want, and it's a win-win? And both Sarah and I have worked on development codes, you know, for many, many years in many jurisdictions. And so we bring that experience to Effingham County to look at new ways in which we approach old problems. You know, zoning is one tool. You've got your subdivision regulations, and there's also other standards that we can look at. And so that's what we'll really be hoping to do through that conference of planning. And the other thing is understanding what the challenges are, what the, you know, simply saying, "I don't want growth," is hard to understand the rationale behind it, but we can break that down and say, "Okay, what is it about the growth that concerns you?" And then we can really start to articulate what some potential solutions might be.
Thank you.
Any other questions, or should I move on, Mr. Chairman? Okay. So in the multifamily ordinance, right now, the draft that you have in front of you does three main things. There are some updates to your definitions. There's some clarification about open space. And then finally, some modifications to density, lots, and use. In the definitions, we have clarified what is considered open space. And the intent here is really to, to make sure that open space, the intent of the open space provisions are to provide usable areas for the residents who live in these communities. And so we've added some clarification to the definition of open space to ensure that it is space that is truly functional for the people who live there, and it's not kind of leftover space, if you will. We've also added some definitions for garden apartments, multifamily, and mixed use with standards for parking and non-residential uses within the project.
What is the difference, or what do you consider green space? Because I'm glad you clarified common space, because I think that's really what I'm looking for, and I kept calling it green space, just thinking of recreation area.
So if you look at the bottom of page three, under amenity requirements, you can see the standards that have been added there for outdoor open space. And there are some design requirements around that, that it would have features such as paths or walkable areas, landscaping, seating, lighting, and other amenities. That it would be oriented in a way in which it's a part of the community and not kind of tucked off in a corner. So that's what item C is about, that it's generally designed so it's oriented to the front of dwellings and/or community buildings so that it's integrated into the design of the development. And then there's also a provision about the maintenance of the open space areas to address some of the concerns.
And that is on page three, you said?
Yes, sir. The bottom, it's under 5.6.4.
It's on four.
Four, okay, all right. Yeah, I was looking at three. Okay, all right, with you.
So I don't see on here the wetlands that were used to be included in green space, which I'm a fan of, because I don't think wetlands are green space.
Okay.
So this kind of defines that and takes, takes it a step further and is actually usable area, not just, hey, we're gonna use this for part of our... So I like that. Kids can't play in it, you can't use it. There's nothing you can do with it except leave it alone.
Right. And in particular, I skipped over, I apologize, on, at the top of the first page, the common outdoor open space. And this, I believe, gets to what you're talking about, Commissioner, is, can include paths for active recreation areas, pathways, and open space, swimming pools, and open space for congregating, ponds, lakes, buffers, or other spaces that are not usable by the residents of a development for recreational purposes shall not be included in the common.
That's what I was reading. It's my brawl of a comment.
On this open space, roads and all is not, it's got to be 10%, right?
So roads are not included in your...
Roads are not included there.
Correct.
Okay.
And do we need to put this, and this may not be the point to bring this up, but, and you may have just answered it, but I didn't really understand it, but have 10% of usable acreage just so people don't get deemed for wetlands and unusable property?
Okay.
I had one engineer that, that said, "Hey, I would recommend this just so somebody doesn't get deemed for having 10 acres of wetlands..."
Okay.
"...on their property," which, oh, she can't do anything with that, so...
On that subject, I mean, there are certain things you can do with wetlands, like you can, well, it'll disturb the land, you can mulch it. Do you make it a pathway, or unusable in that way, or a park, a walking trail, or is that, could that be considered? Or just trying to see what's gonna be gray area and what's not.
Right, no, and it's, I think it's an excellent question. If there are activities, so obviously, the configuration of wetlands is going to determine a lot of that. So if there are opportunities to do, for example, a... So if there are opportunities to do, for example, a wetland trail that might run alongside the wetland, then I think absolutely that could be included in your open space. Technically, it would be outside of the wetland unless they got a permit in order to do it within the buffer or within the wetland. And we can add some language to provide some additional guidance around that if you think that's important for us to.
As long as it doesn't become a swamp certain times of the year and unusable, you know.
And I think, and I think part of, and that's where we get to, I mentioned earlier, design standards. So if you have a trail that's going to be a wetland trail. Do we need to look at certain design standards for wetland trails to say that in certain places it would need to be an elevated boardwalk to ensure that it is still usable? Now, I don't think we want to, I think that's a great conversation for us to have and that's a great example of where we may go ahead and pass some initial modifications to your ordinances in order to address some of these really sensitive, time-sensitive issues. But we might want to take a little bit more time to look at how provisions like wetland trails might be incorporated. Because they very likely could be incorporated in areas outside of just the multi-three, multifamily jurisdiction and really go to design standards overall.
Done correctly, could be really nice and useful.
Absolutely. Can I keep moving? Are there questions or comments you want to? And obviously this is your workshop. I'm happy to do it in whatever.
No, I think you're doing great. I mean, in fact, as we, we can ask questions and discuss things as we go. That's perfect.
So to your question earlier, green space is not the same as common space.
The green space is intended to be common for everyone's use. So it's, so green space, so for example, if you had a development that had.
Well, like I.
It was, sorry.
Let me clarify what I'm saying when I say this. If you have a pool, that's part of the common space. You have a clubhouse, that's part of the common space. But yet we do want a certain amount of green.
Right.
In the community. Is that defined in this document as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
In other words, a separation of common and.
Green.
You've got some grass.
You may have so much common, but so much of that's got to be green.
Right.
Ride bikes, play ball.
Yeah.
Ensure that all your open spaces.
Or it could just be undisturbed trees.
Good point. I didn't even think about that. Instead of just lumping it all together, have a little sectionalized where.
Yeah, and I think it is in the document if I remember and she's.
There's a place to play kickball and go swimming.
Okay.
She might just point that out when we get to that part of the document. This is the green space requirement. This is the common space requirement and how they're related.
Okay, perfect.
Teresa, we got Sarah.
Let's see. Oh, great. Okay. Sarah, you're with us now? Okay, we, we're still working on audio here. We know that we have you with us. We're just going through the ordinance and we will keep on moving along. Okay, so here's your open space clarification. It requires multifamily projects to provide 150 square feet or 10%, whichever is greater of common open space. The standards for what's considered open space and then, as I mentioned a moment ago, the maintenance association to ensure that that common space is properly maintained. Yes, sir.
And this is pretty common in other counties, I would think.
Yes, absolutely. And you know, a lot of times you will have a property management company that's going to be managing the property overall. Especially for a multifamily apartment complex. So that's just part of, you know, what's under their contract. And one thing this does, I just want to clarify, in 5.6.4.1. It's 150 square feet per multifamily dwelling unit. So that is not included on the, on the bullet, but an important clarification to make. Or 10% of total acreage is common open space and we will go back and look at that.
Square feet per unit.
Yes, sir. Let's see.
This is where you were turned up, but don't let it include the 10%, the wetlands. Because you may have 100 acres and only 10 of uplands. In that case, it'd be 10% of the uplands, right? Is that in this document that says that?
We'll add that clarification. I, I think it's implied, but it is not clear, so we will make sure to add that clarification.
And that was something that a couple of other folks have mentioned is the fact of what we have. Is just try to be a little clearer, spell it out just a little bit more, just so there's less questions.
Yeah. And see, that's, I like this because even if you do a pud and you want to put that multifamily with the business, now you know, what if the uplands is green space? What's the common space? And if you put a pud together and it fits these different zones, it should be good with us.
And one of the things in the, in that 5.6.4.1. It articulates the open space calculations must be on the subdivision, subdivision plat. So if the property is subdivided, then that information will be included on there. Now, we, we need to make sure that we have provisions if the property doesn't have to go through the subdivision process. That we still are making sure, because your, obviously your subdivision and your zoning work together. But we want to make sure however a project comes to you, that you have the information that you need at the proper time. Other questions about open space? And we can obviously come back, but if, if not, I can go ahead and move forward. We will move next into density, lot and use modifications. So in the R3, the current draft includes a reduction from 12 dwelling units per acre to nine dwelling units per acre. The reduction in density will not affect the existing projects or projects currently under review. But it's recommended not to go below nine dwelling units per acre as it may not provide mixed use. In the R6, it's a reduction from six dwelling units per acre to 4.5 dwelling units per acre. An increase in the minimum lot area from 6,600 square feet to 8,500 square feet. And there was a, an analysis done of your existing lots that showed there are very few properties that could obtain a six dwelling unit. I'm sorry, six unit per acre density. The average lot size in this district is 16,000 square feet. And there are numerous lots between 16,000 and 7,500 square feet, but very few under 7,500 that would be affected by this change.
Can we just make that an R4 then? For simplicity, or is it possible?
You could. There are, there would be administrative requirements to go with that anytime you change. Yeah. Yes. Oh.
Oh, it's already.
Teresa reminded me that R4 is your.
It's already in use.
Already in use, yes. And that's.
Just trying to think simplistic.
Absolutely.
We already got it blown with R3. That's your multifamily.
Is it R3?
Well, and that's why I mentioned at the very beginning, when we, when we take this kind of the big picture look at the ordinance in its totality, both the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance, we will look for opportunities to clarify, streamline, you know, reduce confusion. Anywhere we possibly can, because the more clear it is for you and the development community, everybody has a better.
A sixth grader should be able to read this and figure out most of it. Seriously.
Yeah, I don't know what the administrative issues would be, but it would be nice if the Rs.
That made sense.
Referenced, you know, the higher the R, the higher the density and they don't do that right now.
Well, we can certainly look at that in our process.
Yeah.
I'm going to revamp it.
I don't know if it's an administrative nightmare or not to get that changed as far down the road, but you can make comments on that later if you will.
Teresa's had.
Because I don't want to create, you know.
We have an R9 and an R4 right there.
But definitely, we do want to make the ordinance as user-friendly as it can be and make it intuitive. In the B1 and B2. This is a modification for allowing mixed use. So right now, your ordinance reads where mixed use is residential above commercial. This provides a little bit more flexibility and allows it to be part of the same development, but not necessarily vertically stacked. We did include some provisions in there regarding how the site is developed so that the mixed uses are complementary to one another. So for example, we don't want to inadvertently create a regulation that might have multifamily over here and has commercial over here. Yet they don't relate to one another at all. The whole idea behind mixed use is having opportunities for people to be able to easily access what they need for their, for their uses. And then finally, in B3, allow mixed use rather than multifamily. Remove warehouse operations and motor freight terminals as conditional uses and clarified the height as 60 feet.
Where would motor freight terminals go?
Those would go in industrial.
Is that.
And that's pretty standard, yes, sir.
I don't know why we ever had that.
Now, the warehousing, weren't you interested in moving that out of B3?
Yes, but you know, like the mini, like.
This is mini. It was just.
On the wareha, like we got a prohibited use in B2. Which I don't even think that should be in there, mini warehouses.
Where do you think that should be? It shouldn't be in industrial.
No, it shouldn't, but it, it just, I think it's confusing the way it's worded. It's a mini warehouse. Was it a mini, what's a mini warehouse?
And that's where your definitions become really important?
Yeah, we need to define what a mini warehouse is. Like, like, and we've already got storage facilities in there. I thought that was a mini warehouse. For residential or would it be? I mean, I envision a commercial district being housing things where you could go buy stuff. So if you're a plumber and you offer plumbing supplies and services, that would be a B district, somewhere probably B3. That way you could have warehousing to support your business there, but not be in the warehousing business.
Right.
You know, which would be industrial. So I don't know how, how you would clarify that, but there's so much of it kind of jumbled up here with the warehousing stuff.
There.
It's confusing.
Right, it can get confusing. I think definitions certainly help. You can also, again, have additional parameters that outline the scale that would be allowed in a B3 versus a different zone.
Something like that to differentiate or, and just better definitions. Hey, this is what we mean by mini warehouse if you, you know, that goes hand in hand.
Self-storage just as, I mean, that.
That's easy.
Yeah, self-storage, I mean, it used to, that very, a lot of people have gotten away from the mini warehouse. They're calling it self-storage. Sorry. So I don't know.
I think that's what they meant by mini warehouses and self-storage.
There's portable mini warehouses. I mean, that's a huge business.
Yeah, but that's why it's confusing in the prohibited use because it says includes mini warehouses, but then.
I'm not seeing the mini warehouses.
Oh, yeah.
And the B2?
B2, that's actually B1.
And B3? What page are you on?
B1 and page eight and nine. So B1, permitted uses, libraries, which is great. That looks awesome. Conditional uses, a little heavier. And then I guess you could, that's okay as a prohibited use, but then with B2.
So B2 is where self-storage is called.
I don't see self-storage. You said, you said something to B1?
Yeah, where is self-storage? Is it B3?
See, I, I think that could be residential.
B1.
By right in B2 and 3.
What's that?
Yeah, it's conditional in B1, in B1. And by right in B2 and B3, if I remember. We did, it's been not even a year ago.
So where is self-storage permitted?
And that came out of a rezoning on Hodgville, if you remember.
Right, I do, but I don't see it on the new document. That's what I was wondering.
It's under.
Oh, I see it. Yep. Conditional uses. Yep.
5.9.
Yep.
2. On the second page of 5.9.
You're right. I got it. I see it, Bill. So conditional use under B1.
5.9.
And this is an example of just an administrative cleanup, what we would do here.
Oh, there it is. I thought, I know I saw it in, in B1. And that's what's confusing. You got it.
See, that's even worse. It says warehousing and then in.
Then it's got mini warehouses. So.
Right.
I think it's going to be taken out of there. This is understood. It's like self-storage right here. It's okay. And this is prohibited right here, mini warehouses. So it's, it's, that would throw me off if I'm trying to figure out if I could have a self-storage unit somewhere.
Yeah, so I, I think that's, that's a perfect example of what we'll be looking for. And the other thing, this is just a detail, just so you know. So right now, what we would probably propose is simply list self-storage, mini storage facilities or whatever we decide to call them. And the definition that's included here, move that to definition.
Yeah. So that it's. You could just take that out, but then it wouldn't, you'd be like, why, why is that like that?
Then warehouses, you take out including mini warehouses.
Just take it out.
Just put warehouses, period.
Yeah, I'm not saying that as a conditional use in B1.
It's prohibited, right.
Usually our prohibited uses preclude a, a conditional use somewhere else in everything I've seen in the zoning. That's why they prohibit it one and allow conditional use in another.
I got you. So you don't, you don't think you need to even.
I only think you need to list it because there's no, nothing to.
If you, so is the intent and your desire to keep the self-storage warehouse as a conditional use in B1?
Yeah, I would think so. Because that's the closest.
Only question I have about not including the prohibitization of warehousing, would someone come say, well, you got me.
The whole thing's confusing, warehousing including mini warehouses.
Oh, I'd get rid, I'd get rid of including mini ware. I'd just put prohibited warehousing so they don't confuse.
If we define warehousing industrial, I think that's going to take all that out, but I think we need to.
As long as you do that, we'll be fine.
Yeah, but somewhere in B, have a use where it's, you can have a warehouse as long as it's retail type of warehouse, where I'm selling. I've got a storefront. A B to me, or C, I've seen Cs in other districts or other municipalities. Those are places you go buy stuff from. Those places you can generally go visit. When you separate that, you get in, you get more industrial stuff. It's probably not 100% that way, but that would help me define, okay. Do I need to be looking in the B section or do I need to be looking industrial section with what I want to do? Does the public freak with that? Is that what, is that correct thinking?
So I think, yeah, and I think part of this process is having that kind of those big picture conversations with you, with our stakeholders of what is the intent of each district? What is this district trying to do? What is the char, and that's where.
What's the character of it?
Going back to those character area maps, that's why those are important. Because that's, that really should be your guide that helps drive the decisions of what's actually included in that district.
And then that's, to me, the B district's more friendly around residential and in certain areas.
Yeah, so your B, your B1 uses are typically going to be more geared towards that mixed use.
For residents.
Yeah, things that service the residential community.
Exactly.
I was thinking about our recent zoning on Highway 80, you know, they were trying to bend the requirements to get what they want.
Yeah, we didn't even have a listing for that. But I think this is going to clean that up a lot where it's pretty.
So that's why you'd remove warehousing, because you don't want any kind of warehousing in the B1.
Yeah, the B at all.
Period, even if it's small.
And we may need to redefine.
Because there's no retail, really, commercial type businesses that need a little small warehouse.
And do we go as far as associated with warehousing? I guess in B, associated?
Yeah, but like, you know, like a Ferguson.
Meter yard, I mean.
Well, now with the, I mean, some of them do have retail. They sell, I mean, just like the one I had. I mean, are they going to be allowed to, like, I sell golf carts, trailers, a little bit of everything.
I think that's a B.
Yeah, it would be a B.
Yeah.
But I mean, it was in conjunction with the warehousing.
But it was self-storage, right?
Right.
Yeah, that's, I don't consider that warehouse. Self-storage was a, is a different.
I got you. Okay, I see what you're saying.
Warehousing is where I go. I'll come and warehouse for you.
Okay, I got you.
So, yeah, I think when you get into B2 and you get into maybe a parts store that has to have a little warehouse for all its parts.
Like Ferguson in Savannah. Ferguson you go in, they've got warehousing in the back to support their retail.
Right, but that's, and that's different because that's in support of the business.
Exactly. So that's, I think that should be B if everybody agrees.
Virtually every business. I mean, furniture stores like that.
Higher B, but, but in the B area.
And typically that would be considered an accessory building to support the use of a building.
That's what I was trying to get at. So that, that's the kind of warehousing I would foresee. And I just think warehousing is a bad term because especially with, with what we're going through in our vicinity. You know, that, that, everybody starts thinking warehousing.
Yeah, we can, we can add some clarification.
That would be awesome.
Around all that.
To add clarification that in B2, it's warehousing that is in support of a retail.
I think we probably would.
Business or something.
Yeah, that would be great.
I think we probably would define that as an accessory building to support the.
The retail.
Supports support of retail business.
Retail service.
Warehousing.
Like B3. Would you conditional that or would it be in authorized use in B3?
Which one are you talking about? Warehousing in general?
That what she just said, of, of, like a warehousing that supported a retail operation.
I, I don't know that that would be a conditional.
Or would you just allow it in B3?
Yeah, if I had a.
We'll take a look at what your current, how your current ordinance is stated. And what I would suggest, if you're comfortable with it, is let us clean up any kind of, you know, red flag language that we need to with this revision. But as far as looking at where warehousing or midi storage or whatnot may or may not be considered in various districts. If you're comfortable with, let's put that in our. may or may not be considered in various districts, if you're comfortable with, let's put that in our parking lot biker act, and we'll make sure to evaluate that as we're looking at the comprehensive.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great idea.
And am I thinking right, we're, we're looking at where warehousing supports a retail establishment, Walmart's got to have some warehousing, Lowe's has got to have some warehousing.
In that matter, a convenience store has storage in the back.
Yeah, and so.
And usually there's.
You know, I mean, what weird is it, yeah, I, I mean.
And that's what we want in the B two and the B three, but all other warehousing where you're warehousing somebody else's inventory, that's not going to, that's going to be industrial.
Right.
Yeah, we'll take it.
Or any kind of manufacturing attached, or assembly, or anything like, all that would go industrial.
Yeah, anything related to manufacturing, assembling type businesses.
I think by doing that, our com- comprehensive plan will be easier to work with as well, because it's going to flow. Your B is going to be around your residential, your industrial is going to stay away from the residential for the most part, there'll be some touching here and there, and, um, nothing, somebody brought this up the other day, and I had the idea to, on our buffers, you know, if we've got a B three next to a B three, well, we should be able to eliminate that buffer, shouldn't we, just automatically, we want, or an I one next to an I one, why would you have to go get a variance for that when we know this is two industrial properties buttoned up to each other? Is there a way to, to add some?
Some jurisdictions will have a buffer requirement that's triggered by the adjacent zoning.
Exactly, that way we're, because every time we, we're, we're getting into that.
Yeah.
You gotta have a variance no matter what's next to you, just to get around our, our buffer requirements. I don't know how you guys felt about that, but that would make everybody's life a little easier, and the developer's life a little easier, I'm next to I one, I know I can eliminate it there, you know, there's no need for it.
Mr. Chairman, um, I, if we can do also in this, provide clarification of wholesale operations, which are required, um, which are an approved use in B three.
Yes, that'd be great.
I think that's tied into, uh, what the commissioners are, are mentioning here.
And that's kind of what Ferguson is, they'll sell to the public and they'll, they'll go wholesale. That's just a one example I can think that does that kind of thing.
What was, what was the company you mentioned?
Ferguson.
Ferguson.
They do plumbing and, you know, you can walk in there, I can walk in there and buy some, uh, sink stuff.
I bought stuff from Ferguson Sun, exactly.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, you know, I could see that, you're servicing the public and it's not full-fledged, and you got some trucks coming in to support it, but not to a great degree. But if you had buffers next to residential, that would change in that aspect, if you're next to another B three, perhaps it wouldn't, it'd be fine.
And again, some of this, we may look at approaching some of these challenges that you're talking about from a different perspective, so for example, if you take B one, B two, and B three, you might allow a similar use in all three districts, the difference might be the scale.
Yeah.
Right?
That's a great idea, yeah.
So you may have a small-scale grocery store that fits in beautifully in B one, but if that small-scale grocery store becomes two hundred thousand square feet.
Right.
It's a very different character, and so that's.
That, we really need that, that's a good, very, very good point.
See, a lot of those, you could have a, a business park and do that as a PD, and all that be kind of contained in the PD on your setbacks, you know, between, you know, the design of that.
You could, and certainly we'll look, we'll look at PDs, um, and PDs are always going to be, I think, part of your ordinance. To the extent we can look to incorporate some of this in your base zoning, that does help kind of give a common understanding and expectation that can take that guesswork out of a PD, but certainly maintaining those, those PDs. I did work for, in, um, Glen Ha- Glen County has an extension of their staff for about a year and a half, or two years, and they have so many planned development districts, it's, I mean, if you put them all together, it's about this many, and it gets extremely complicated, um, to be able to, um, manage those.
Because they're all different, they're, yeah.
All different, yeah, yeah, but it remains a great question. Other questions, comments? And if it helps to kind of walk through, I mean, now, what we've, what we've included in the presentation is kind of the main high level, um, and we're, you know, we certainly can walk through this in as little or as much detail as you'd like.
May I do this real quick? Only other thing I would question in D three would be lumber yards. Just put that on the table, because we're, we got processing lumber yards and just, is that something you want next to Walmart?
I guess we'd have to define lumber yard, not, we ain't not making the lumbers, cutting and all that, but.
Well, they've even got a.
Like in sales.
Processing.
This one says including processing, and I think it, they probably need to find cells of lumber in a lumber yard versus the processing.
Yeah.
That would be very loud, trying to get the loud things into the industrial area.
Okay.
On definitions on page two. Two point two, five point three, all of them single family, but there's four different things, and, and what's the difference in all of them? What's a family industrialized home? I mean, it, it looks like two point two five three would take care of all four of those in a row. But they got them, why, why would you separate them?
So.
I mean, what is a, what is a family industrial, uh, home?
This is to differentiate between a site-built structure and a factory-built structure.
Well, it, it, it brings that up too.
Because they are, they are regulated differently than your ordinance.
But how you, you don't have ordinance on each one of these, all four of them, different, I mean, what, what's no change on it?
So I don't think we propose, I'm not sure if we've looked at this in detail yet.
It's just given a definition of each.
Right.
It's on the second page there.
Yep.
So.
You got, you got four different single, uh, single family, and some of them's detached, some of them's not. But it looks like to me, all of them would come under one.
Once that are two point two five point four, five, and six are subsets of two point two five point three, which I think is where you're going, that those are all types of single-family detached dwellings, so they're almost definitions that are substandard to the definition of single-family detached dwelling.
And it's got the difference in if it's a, if it's site-built or if it's a manufactured home, you know, I mean, it looks like they'd all come under one thing instead of all separated four different ways.
Yes, sir, there are nuances of.
What would be the reason for it?
Because of the way that they are governed in your ordinance, and the, where they're allowed and where they're, where site-built and where industrial housing is allowed or not allowed, that's why they're differentiated.
You don't want site-built next to a manufactured, I would think.
What's a family industrial home, what is that, I mean, I don't even know what that is.
That's a manufactured home, that's a.
Well, they got, they got detached and they have other things in there too.
Site-built single family would be built on-site, a class A, single-family detached dwelling is, um, a manufactured home or an industrial home that meets the state standards, which are also your local standards, so that's the class A, and a class B is an industrialized home that does not meet the compatibility standards, typically, that would be a unit that was manufactured, if I remember correctly, before nineteen seventy-eight.
Okay.
So that would be, the old mobile home would be the class B, and there are actually state restrictions as to whether or not you can relocate those structures and where those structures, so that's why there are so many different definitions for a single-family home.
Okay.
And we can clarify that, if, because it sounds like we might need to.
I like how you've changed the mixed-use residential from just townhomes. Isn't that the way we listed before, if you have B three, townhomes, you're just good. Uh, another thing I'd like to see, and I, I've seen this comment in other areas, instead of just having I one heavy and light, I one, I one, I two, I three, differentiate some of that, because right now you can look at our parcel maps and see I one, you have no clue whether it's heavy or light or anything. Well, if we could have a little more clarification in that, I know that would help developers, and people looking for land that they want to develop, you know, what, what can I do in an I one? I don't know, is it heavy or light, there's no way to tell.
Where'd you put sand pits in here, speaking of that?
They're on the bottom somewhere, I don't know.
And those, those are exactly the types of issues that we want to hear from the community.
Yeah.
From, obviously from you as the commissioners, like, what are the things that you want to make sure that we look at during this process? You know, what are the uses that are challenging for you as the elected officials to try and weigh? And how can we provide some more guidance and clarity around those, so this is absolutely kind of feedback.
Well, you touched on something earlier, um, that I had a discussion with, um, somebody else a couple of weeks ago, and I hadn't thought about this, but the, I guess they referred to it as the density bonus requirements, they gave me some examples that the city of Richmond Hill uses, where they start out with two and a half, and then it's, if you put a walking trail, you get like another half point. If you, because me personally, I would like to see probably fifteen or twenty percent common area, but maybe I, we don't come out the gate and say that, we keep it at ten, but, you know, if you do put fifteen or twenty percent, then you get one or one and a half percent.
Right.
Or one and a half more density. And then, in my opinion, I just think that makes us look a little more business-friendly, it's kind of a win-win situation, um, we kind of get what we want, um. Their example, I think, is even materials, like if you use hardy plank on the outside, that's a che- a checkmark for extra density, and it's just, um, I don't know, it seems like a business-friendly way to get more of what we want and we're working together.
And we can certainly look at, and, and, and these are commonly used by jurisdictions, you know, the city of Savannah, um, has them in place, not for height, you know, especially in the downtown area where you have very tight restrictions on height, um, there are height bonuses available for kind of going above and beyond, so we can absolutely look at that. And I do think that one thing that, um, is important as we continue these conversations to think about is, especially when we're talking about something like multifamily, that, um, can kind of get labeled as, you know, bad or undesirable or whatnot because of density, usually, not, not all the time, but a lot of times it's not the density, it's more the design and the amenities, and the quality of what you're bringing to the community that's the challenge. And so I think that's going to be a really important part of our conversation as we move forward with the community, and understand, like, to your point earlier, Commissioner, about, you know, what do you do when you get people that say, I, I hate multifamily? Oh, okay, why do you hate multifamily? Let's really break it down to what your concerns are, and see if that's something we can address, um, and just to kind of illustrate this point, this is one slide that kind of compares two similar properties that the one on the left is actually lower density, but it has no amenities and no common area. And the one on the right, you know, fifty percent more density, but a much more attractive development that provides the amenities and the resources that you would like to see for your residence, so we want to be able to have these types of conversations with you as the board, um, to be able to really articulate what elements we need to make sure that we are addressing in your.
Yeah, and you're really right on the nail now that we, we've been discussing, we had, I don't have it hurt any discussion being against density, but we want the quality that comes with density, that's why we're looking at the common spaces, the recreational, the clubhouses, so anything that your firm can help us, that we can legally do to improve the quality of development, that's what we're looking for.
Well, and I, I bring this up now because, you know, as part of what's included here in the draft, we are including lower density for your multifamily, because that's what we were asked to do, um, but if you get to, it depends, again, on the type of development that you want to see. So if more affordable housing, if, you know, more singles in the community, if those that are attracted to multifamily development are the type of, you know, what you would like to grow towards in your vision, then, you know, if you, if your density's too low, you're going to preclude certain types of development, you will not get multifamily development that will diversify the type of housing. Now, I'm not saying which way to go, it's just food for thought.
You're exactly right, we need to, to hit that demographic as well as we're growing, so the single person fresh out of school has a place to go and rent, that's not twenty-five hundred dollars a month, you know, but looks something like you got there that's nice and taken care of, and maybe the builder's got some kind of quality, uh, credits, like Commissioner Delutch was talking about, and it includes some of this green space, and this is wonderful, I mean, I like it in a lot, a lot of ways, because of the infrastructure especially, it's like cars would be slower going through your, your other option and everything, it's a safer neighborhood, and you got more density, you know, there's ways to do this and, and make everybody happy.
Well, I know we've, I guess the market's definitely changing, um, these days, and I know we've got a market out there that they don't want the bigger yards, they don't want the bigger lot, they don't have time, everything's so fast-paced, but I just want to make sure that we have something in place to try to help keep your kids safe, at least give them an area that they can, they can go play, instead of street.
We'll keep the values up, where, you know, like, you know, my big thing is the off-street park, and, you know, you drive in these neighborhoods, you can't hardly get through, cars lined up everywhere. So.
And this would, I love that second plan does exactly that.
Yes.
I don't think the difference is, um.
Never realized that same.
Yeah, is, is.
That's neat.
Is density as much as lot size, just smaller footprint of your lot size, basically, and, and transferring that large yard, not necessarily using it to add another lot, but go towards the green space, so it's not.
Well, and that's, and if you look at kind of.
And there's a sharing there, some, you know, a happy medium.
If you look at development on a, on a continuum or spectrum, if you will, you know, the most rural development, you have very large lots, you know, all of the, the open spaces, you're in your private, you know, area, um, and as you start, and if you look at the other end of that spectrum, when you're in a city per se, you may have no yard at all, or you may only have a courtyard, but there's lots of parks and common spaces, so it's a matter of where does that open space fall on the spectrum, and how does that compare with the development regulations you're setting for? So you may find that we come out of this with variations, even of single family, where you might have some smaller lot-size subdivisions development, but you have a greater percentage of common open space, because you're trading off your private yard for that common open space, and then you are able to reach, you know, a broader audience, and the person who maybe, you know, used to want a large yard for whatever reason decided, I don't want to maintain that, I'd rather go to the park and hang out with my other friends and drink coffee, so, that's, that's what.
But basically what you end up, if, if a lot is going to be, um, say, thirty, we, we allow the lot to be thirty percent smaller than typical we've allowed, doesn't mean you can put thirty percent more homes on it, maybe you can put fifteen percent more homes on it, the other fifteen, everybody's pulling their, their extra yards together and making one common.
Right.
If that makes sense, and that's kind of the sharing, you know, the, trying to.
Absolutely.
For the best of both worlds.
And that's why we want to make sure that open space is, is useful, that it is something that truly can be accessed, so.
Mitch Ford brought up something interesting, as usual, the sand pits, uh, for lack of a better term, revolving zoning. So if somebody comes and gets a sand pit zoning, right now we currently do an I one, then we revert it back to residential, which is, I think, a terrible idea. You know, and it was just, we were just a small community that's blossoming, and it's not that anybody done anything wrong in the past, we're, we're just a different community now. You know, we're, and, and we're experiencing a lot different challenges than what we did twenty years ago. So we need this revamping badly, so how do, how do other municipalities handle things like that, where you've got, okay, we got this use, it's needed, uh, cuts down on construction cost, da-da-da-da-da, which translates down to the homeowner in some instances, if we can get dirt there to, to build up their place. How do you zone that, bring it back, I mean, is that a, it's just, to me, maybe we need something different or new for that, or some kind of mechanism that would work better.
So we can certainly add that to the list, um, I did some work in Jasper County, South Carolina, and they have a lot of borrow pits.
Yeah.
Jasper County, and this was something that we actually put quite a bit of language into the zoning ordinance for that very reason, and part of opening a borrow pit or sand mining operation was also to include the closing plan, um, that did spell out by the owner and operator, what the, when that mine was closed, what the use afterwards would be. Um, so that was in South Carolina, and they have different state regulations over borrow pits, but certainly we can look at that, um.
Maybe, maybe some kind of zoning that would, would be a more of an evolving zoning, instead of just throwing an industrial stamp on it, you know, it gets, that's confusing as well. You know, hey, that's I one, not, not really.
Right, right, well, and if it's zoned I one, then, you know, even if somebody, if that's their plan, but for whatever reason they don't do that, but it's still zoned I one, so then any other use under I one can come in.
Exactly, it's dangerous, really. It's dangerous. Really is.
Though we do restrict those I-1s to borrow pit only.
Okay.
We do, we do.
Still.
From a surface level, it just.
Yeah, but, but if the neighbor wanted to, I mean, technically, you know, his, his property now adjoins industrial. I mean, so the argument could potentially be there.
On the residential that we're looking at tonight, multifamily is up to three, I guess, units in one building. Where do apartments go? Is that a?
No, it would be, it would, so multifamily would include more than three units per building. But that's where your density comes in. So if you, if your density is limited, you may not get more than three units per building. Because of, so for example, if, you know, there were a.
On this, on this eighty-five hundred square feet, I think it was.
Oh, I'm sorry. I may have been looking at the wrong section. Apologize.
On this eighty-five hundred square feet, I think, for buildings, is that what it is?
Mm-hmm.
Forgot where I saw that now.
Yeah, that's under R-six.
Page six.
R-six, okay.
So we're going from six thousand square feet to eighty-five hundred square feet.
But.
Lot size.
Yeah, is this single family dwelling or can you put multifamilies on that, R-six?
This is single.
This would be single family.
Right, so I'm going back to R-three, so I'm looking at.
Okay.
R-three, we have multifamily. All right. So I'm not seeing the square feet. I think I saw it a while ago, but I've lost it. But can you stack three units?
Yes, you have a maximum building height of thirty-five feet.
Okay.
So as long as you are within that maximum building height.
Okay. So this is where the apartments would go in that scenario. Now, can these, and this R-three, can they be connected, those, those units? Or has it got, each unit's got to stand by itself?
Um, so is there a, is there a maximum number of units that can be in each building? Is that your question?
No, I'm saying, where do apartments go? If I wanted to build apartments, okay? And so my building may have twelve units that are attached, you know, four sections of three, for example. Done right with all the amenities, clubhouses or whatever, that may be an acceptable density for a certain area.
Right.
Where does that go?
So.
Is that R-three? Is that another zoning?
No, that would go in R-three as long as you don't exceed the density of the district.
And, and the density that you can do for one acre in R-three is nine?
Yes.
Units.
With the proposed changes. Currently it's twelve, and with the proposed changes, it would be nine.
Okay. I don't know. And that may be right. I just don't know. What are the apartments that we have over on Goshen Road and twenty-one? What are those? What's the density of those?
We can look into that.
I'm just thinking about some apartments I've been to where some couples have lived, to your question earlier about getting started. And it's pretty dense, but they're pretty nice. You know, and it's in the right area. It's not next to a residential. It's in a downtown. You, you see that if you go to the Buckhead area in Atlanta, for example, or.
Those are much higher density, I guarantee you.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Those are getting forty.
Oh, yeah. That's what I'm saying, with the Prince and Queen and Prince, I can't remember, is that, what part is that town? Can't remember what part of the town that is. But there's a lot of apartments there that are really dense, but they're really nice apartments.
Right.
And they're well-maintained and so I don't know. Do we have any zoning for anything like that? We may not need it at this point.
Yeah, and I think, again, this is, this is a great example of somewhere I think we need to spend some time. I mean, I think we can go ahead and make some changes to address what maybe some of your hot, you know, button items are. But really getting an understanding of what type of development Effingham County wants to see. Or you could also say, you know what, we're not, we'd rather that go to the cities. Or what, but this, that's that bigger picture conversation.
A lot of those, a lot of those developments are in the cities. That's a good point. I thought about that.
So, and sometimes, I mean, there's myriad of reasons.
And maybe another way to approach that is any density higher, these zonings would have to be in a pud. So we could look at that density. It may fit in it. Rick comes in, he wants to buy a thousand acres and develop something. So he's almost got a small city with himself. That's what I'm saying. That changes from having fifty to a hundred acres where you're trying to put a little pud together. You got a thousand acres, you're trying to do commercial, residential, high density. Maybe that's where we go to the higher densities on these apartments. You put the pud together, we look at the playgrounds, the everything. So maybe I'm answering my own question, I guess.
You can also have, so right now we're putting a lot of design standards in the actual zoning ordinance. There are also ways to include some of these design standards in other elements of your code. So they're still required, but they're not tied into the zoning. Because especially if you get into larger scale developments, it can take a lot of upfront cost for the development community to engineer and plan all of this out without even knowing if they're getting their zoning. So that's another thing, just to kind of, I think, think about as we go through this process. You know, is this the best place to have?
Right.
All your design standards? Or do you make sure that it's clear and it's understood what's expected? But there might be some nuances in there that can also, and then your subdivision regulations are also going to come into play. So, not to overcomplicate things, but it, I mean, it's, it's complex and there are layers.
I, I think that's good. I think we, we're doing the right thing, clarifying these three zonings and the B-zonings. And, and that's a good basis for growth. Anything else we could consider in a pud.
Yes.
If the land volume is enough, we should look at for higher densities, you know? Or let the cities handle the higher densities from that standpoint. We talked about the I. We definitely need to clean that up.
More layers to the I, so we, anybody can look and kind of see what it is.
As far as a timing standpoint, is that something that you, because it's my understanding, and maybe Teresa can clarify, that this is something you're hoping to, to do sooner rather than later. So with that industrial clarification, industrial, is that something that's also a hot topic? Or is that something you just want us to look at as part of the?
No, I think it's a hot topic.
But I think we need to focus on the moratorium right now, because I mean, we told the builders.
Yeah, you got the moratorium coming up.
We did a thirty-day extension, which I agree, I mean, the industrial, that is important, but I know we're kind of on a timeline on the other.
Yeah, and we cleaned up some of the concern that you, that you have to, if you take the B-three and pull a wareizing out of that, then they only have the I to do.
True, true.
So we, we, you've bought more time for the I, I think, by doing that.
It just needs clarification, cleaning up and some, you know, some sexualized.
I just want us to, to make, because that big, again, I just, that big picture is going to inform so much of what we're doing.
I think you're on track with these, these three zonings.
Speaking of which, what's the timeline for a whole, this whole thing to come together and us actually have?
So our schedule right now, I'll tell you, is pretty aggressive. And I think we are at the end of the year and we're looking at trying to have a draft, is that right? Which I will tell you is quick. It's quick. And that's, that's what we were asked to do, and so that's the schedule that we have outlined. It's really going to be up to you as the board, what's your comfort level in moving through this process. So that's where we are right now. Right now we're at a year, but it's, there's a lot to do too.
But there's some, there's some things we'll complete in between now and then.
Oh, sure.
This.
Gun ranges. How do you?
I have a feeling that we're going to get a list now.
Because we don't have a, nothing to even address that. We've asked, we've had people ask us to do that. And we, it's one of those things where we, we don't have it in our ordinance, period.
Right.
So what's, what's your opinion on something like that? I get asked that every month at least once. And I tell them, I've got, we're working on it, we're working on it, we're working on it. We don't have a mechanism for it.
Right.
So we really need something eventually, hopefully that'd be some kind of Band-Aid at least. Even if it's high level restrictive, at least I can say, hey, look, we do have something here. You may have to go thirty miles out in the wilderness, but, you know, of course I'm exaggerating. But it's something restrictive that everybody here would be happy with and.
Okay.
You know, I, I just don't know how to, I've looked at other counties. There's actually a county-sponsored one not too far from here. I forgot where it was. I found online that it's a county gun range. You know, it's down in a pit and, you know, it's monitored and all that stuff. So, you know, I know they're doing them, but how do you do them? And most of them go off NRA regulations, from what I see. Love to see something like that, at least some kind of, something. We have, like I say, there's, these things come up every once in a while that like, there's nothing in the ordinance anywhere. Like container yards. It doesn't exist.
We have, we have a list so far that we're, we're working from, so by all means, pass those along to.
Yeah.
I mean, because we've already got one, a couple more weeks left on our extension.
Yeah. So how, how do we, it's a good question. How do we, with the moratorium, if, if we clean the, these three Rs up and these three Bs up? So we can go ahead and implement that process? When are we going to have those ready to approve? And maybe that's an administrative question.
When is your moratorium up?
I think.
February fifteenth or something, in the middle of February?
Twenty-first, February twenty-first?
Yeah.
So I think we could get the revisions to this turned around pretty quickly. There's nothing major in here. So we can get those turned back around so that we can make sure that we have it back to you in time to make the changes before your moratorium expires. Unless there's something administrative, then I'm not.
No, the, the next meeting is a full meeting, and if we can, would be the first reading on February fifteenth. So that would be within the moratorium. If we needed to extend the moratorium to accommodate the second reading, then it would be a brief extension of February.
And on the density bonus requirements, I mean, is that something that you're going to add some language in there? I guess kind of a, maybe a recommendation or, or do we add, do we have that in R-six? Or do we only put that in pud? Do we have it in both?
I think that that is a tool that you may find you use across various districts, potentially.
Okay.
So what my suggestion would be, let's hold on to that idea so that we can flush it out and see how it best works. And we can come back and, and make tweaks at a later time if that's agreeable with the board and with the staff. I just, it's, it's a great tool. And I think that if we are able to evaluate how that tool could be used throughout the ordinance, it may be a more fruitful.
Yeah, we can come back and adopt that credit because we don't.
Well, my fear is, with how many things are on the sideline right now waiting for this moratorium to get over with? I mean, is that going to be some less quality developments that come through before we get this in place?
When you're talking about credits, you have more density than what we're doing here. I think if the idea is.
No, I'm talking about do like the city of Richmond Hill did. I mean, they're doing less, they're not doing, starting off at four point five with R-six, they're starting off at like two and a half.
Oh, I see.
And then as you do that, then you can get up to the four and a half.
Oh, wow.
Oh, I didn't, yeah, I didn't understand that.
So there's, I think there's two ways to approach it. Either look at those bonuses now or take it on the other end and set your green space where you want it to be. And then we can look at how we might massage that back down. It's kind of which way you want to go.
Yeah, if we're going to do that.
I'm not saying we have to do everything, you know, I mean, what city of Richmond Hill did, but just.
No, I like what you're saying.
I thought it was a good idea. I mean, something to build off.
Sure.
So for now, going forward, maybe we enter in, and this is just my personal opinion, I guess I'll meet the middle, but we put in there fifteen percent of the usable acreage on a development going forward. And then once we get to a point, we, we can implement this, we scale that back to ten percent. So now if you do these things, then you can get more density.
You can get that ten percent.
We might can get the fifteen, twenty percent common space. But for now, we lock it in at fifteen. So we, we feel comfortable that we'll have enough space.
So you would prefer in this draft that we go ahead and change the ten percent to fifteen?
That's my personal opinion, until we get something like this in place. I would feel better about it personally.
You know, just by looking at the, the map we just saw earlier, the two designs, there's ways to do your density without, and, and even increasing your common areas. That was, that was awesome.
How in Richmond Hill, how do you earn those credits? I didn't hear what you were saying earlier, or generally.
There, there's a list in brief, and Ellet Mesker shared it with me. But like if you put hardy plank on the outside, they start at two point five.
Okay.
And then like they'll give you a half, so then you're up to three. Then if you put a walking trail, they account a lot more for that, so they'd give you one. So now you're from two and a half to four. And that's, but, but they have a list that the developer can choose from.
And we can certainly look at that and, you know, see how we might be able to translate. And if there are other jurisdictions that you are familiar with that you want us to look at? I mean, we're looking at other jurisdictions already.
Sure.
But certainly if there's examples of things that you see in other places.
Fort Wentworth for industrial, you know, they've already been through the trenches of what we're going through right now. They've got some good definitions for industrial.
You know, one of the things Roger and I were just chatting about leisurely was that we have to look, and I think a lot of us have been looking at this, with our growth, just because we lift the moratorium doesn't mean we can automatically go ahead and, and allow all the development. You have to think about that.
You have to look at each individual project, obviously, as a reusing.
Right, because we got to, we, we, we are in the process of improving our road system. We're in the process of building schools. But, you know, we, we probably can't add a couple of thousand homes in the next six months to a year, you know? Or approve that development, not knowing when the Parkway and when Goshen and Hodgeville and all the turn lanes and the roundabouts are improved.
I'm really worried about that, to be honest with you.
Yeah, so just because of the moratorium, we have to somehow, and I'm not sure how we legally do that. I guess Lee, or somebody needs to give us some advice, because one of the things we're going to do through this process is looking at our comp plan of where we want the density and the development and so forth. But then we've got to look at our growth with our other constituents, like our school board and, and different developments, you know? And, and see, can we sustain those residential services that we need to have? So it.
Two main variables are our road systems and our schools.
Yeah.
Well, and that's, again, so that character area map and your future lane use map?
Mm-hmm.
We can bring it, because I know that you've had a lot of, you know, studies done recently with, you know, your transportation study and your water and sewer and look at, you know, are there areas that are better suited to accommodate that growth by virtue of the infrastructure that's there to serve those developments? So that can certainly be.
So right now we do need to find ways to slow down some of the growth, even with, with the moratorium. That's why I like your fifteen percent, because that helps slow it down a little bit more. People have to think twice or come back with some improvements that allows us to adjust the density. I don't know, I just, I'm a little concerned that development may get, stay out of, we don't want to play catch-up here in three or four years from now. We want to get out ahead of this development. And that's why we're spending millions of dollars.
Not interested in slowing it down, it's maybe increasing the quality of it.
Right.
But even if you have the best quality one that you can get to your house, you can't get to school and you can't get to work. And you got a factory in our own systems as well. Can we handle that in our infrastructure? That, that's one of the biggest complaints I get. And this is already terrible. It takes me half an hour to get through here and that, yeah, it's, you can't, how much more can we support? How much more can we handle? I'd never want to say no to development.
No.
But I might want to say not right now to this area because of so much congestion. I don't know where to start with that conversation, but we got to figure out how to mitigate that, because it gets worrisome. People look to us to make these decisions. Anyway, you know, we're running so fast, we need some guidance.
And I don't know how legally you do that, but we need to look at that. What's the possibilities for, can we, can we approve these developments and these zonings for, for growth? And just say, but this is, there's going to be no permits issued for construction until, until twenty-twenty-three or twenty-twenty-four.
Master plan is finished, so we know where it's going.
Until, yeah, certain roads are done, you know, so then you can.
How you can stop an individual from settling his property to, and building a house or?
I'm not talking about building a house, I'm talking about multifamily subdivision.
People complain about everything. I mean, it doesn't matter. They don't want any more be here.
True, but they're.
I don't think we would do that, but the density, if you, if you came in with a, a four hundred homes in twenty acres, you know, that's going to bring a lot to the school and transportation systems.
You got four hundred more and four hundred more. Four hundred, where do you, do you just keep going from the two-lane road?
I don't have an answer. I'm just saying, if I got twenty acres and I got a developer wanting to buy it for a four hundred unit development, it's going to, I'm going to make a lot more money personally than somebody wanting to buy it for a couple of lots.
Right, and they can buy it.
Y'all want to tell me I can't do it?
No, I'm just saying, you can buy it, you can get it.
Well, nobody's going to make that investment. Who's going to make that investment?
Well, you may have to wait a year. That's what I'm saying. I don't know if we can legally do that. But, you know, could somebody in planning say, okay, so I can plan, and you're telling me by twenty-twenty-four, when the Parkway's done or Goshen's done, some development, the school is built, at that point you'll reset. They say no, they can sell it, design it, plan it. I mean, I'm just thinking out loud. I don't know if that's even legal. But I'm just saying, so we don't get behind always chasing the development, you know?
And I've had stuff we've zoned in the past that nobody's burnt ground on yet. What happens with it all?
Yeah.
You know, I worry about that. I get a lot of complaints on that and it's legit. I'm like you, the man has a right to do what he wants to.
I don't want to stop anybody's, anyway, I understand what you're saying, but I, I don't have, nobody, none of us have an answer.
You let it back up for two years of no, and then all that hit at one time and try to manage that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and maybe that's it. Maybe capitalism manages that, because they're not going to build, they don't have the roads for people to get. That's, that's going to hurt the value of their house.
And these large, you know, a, a large development with, that's really, you know, bigger than most of what we've approved. There, that, there's a higher level of discussion with, with schools and infrastructure that's going to come with some of that.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman. Um, I think the, the.
Um, I think, uh, the, the second meeting we were discussing was, was really going to concentrate on, on growth. And I think it's, one of the points we need to bring up in there is, uh, the legal ways to go about, uh, any of these approaches that you take. Um, you know, can you, uh, encourage growth, uh, in certain areas of the county that can, uh, support it? Because if you do that, what you're essentially saying is, um, you're restricting it in others. Um, so, uh, how this is done in the past legally, uh, and, uh, you know, to Commissioner Deloche's point. Um, you know, I know that we've gotten some resistance, uh, I believe it's Bryan County with regards uh, to builders with some of the restrictions that they put on, uh, for what's required components and materials. Um, but if you're doing them as bonuses, uh, to existing zoning, is that more palatable?
It typically is, because it's not a requirement.
Right, uh, and then, um, I guess the, the last one would be, um, you know, how you, um, uh, how you restrict, uh, let's say, we, how you restrict it, is there, are restricting subdivisions, are, 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 I mean, are we talking about restricting permits? Are we talking about, um, you know, how do you restrict one person subdivision and not somebody who wants to do AR one to AR two? Uh, you know, some of these, um, uh, equal protection issues, so, um, but I, so I think when we do have that meeting, uh, you know, looking around, getting somebody who's got some, uh, ex, experience on the legal expertise on this, you know, might be well worth it.
I agree, we're focusing on quality growth now, and, but we need some advice on, um, we need timing of that growth.
Right, right, and, you know, there are, there are many layers in the development process, and there are some layers that you have more ability to control than others. But I think looking at how your land use plan interacts with your other infrastructure planning is a big piece of that. So that you can have, um, growth that can be sustainable, beneficial to the community, to developers, and obviously.
Yeah, it's a lot of its timing, you know, what's bad right now, but when we get the roundabouts built in certain places, probably okay then, but till that point hits, you know.
Well, there's, right, and there's things that we can look at as far as, you know, connectivity and opportunities to be able to, um, you know, accommodate growth. Maybe in ways that it hasn't been before, but maybe makes sense now.
I definitely want to get school board on board with that, planning board, that's, hear from everybody, not just us, but, you know, that we could say, hey, we met with the school board, we met with the planning board, we met, you know, we're, we're engaging all parts of the, of bodies of government here, if you will, um, for a meeting in the minds, so, so I can say, yes, I did talk to superintendent, yes, I did talk, you know. I want to do my due diligence before making decisions as much as I possibly can.
That is my suggestion.
Yeah, quick question for the audience, who, who tonight is from the planning board? I know they were invited tonight, did the planning board come? I, I didn't see them.
You got to late out, invite out to them, um, I saw, um, a couple of members today at the TAB meeting, but, uh, they couldn't make it tonight, so.
I just want to see if they had any, any questions or input they wanted to give tonight as well, so.
And we'll continue to work with our stakeholder committee, um, is, we have two or three of the planning board members?
Uh, we've got all the planning board.
All the planning board, okay, all the planning board members are on that stakeholder committee, um, so, yes.
Sounds good.
Continue to, to reach out.
And they'll be at the eighth meeting, so that'll help, make sure they get an early invite even now, so they can prepare for that.
Yes, or, can we schedule a meeting for that now?
It's scheduled for the eighth.
So that's going to be school board, us.
That will be a community meeting, so anyone would be welcome.
That'd be a community meeting, yeah.
Can we?
Yeah, now, now, I would like to see us, yeah, I'd like to see us maybe schedule something, that, we need to get everybody and have the board, school board, anybody there, but it'd be good if we could schedule something with maybe a couple of members of the school board to talk about growth from that standpoint. Who else would be included in that, maybe a smaller meeting, planning board, a couple of people from the planning board?
Planning board, a couple of people from the school board.
And just have a general discussion in preparation with that, uh, eighth meeting, it'd be good to look at the growth areas, uh, how will it impact the schools? Might even want to invite the IDA director just to, because of the trucking situation and all. So Tim, I, we'll put that in your court if you would, maybe you could schedule something like that in the, before the, uh, February eighth if possible, that's a couple of weeks out.
If, if we're not able to get it on the schedule before the eighth, we still have time, I mean, the, the eighth will be a good, you know, the, the public.
For the whole community, but it'd be nice to carry into that meeting something from the school board about their growth concerns and schools, where they've got them.
Yeah, some districts, they may be, sure, we can handle a lot here, and some, they may be, uh, we're almost at capacity here. We're building, but it's going to take a year before we get that, you know, that, that's another way I'm thinking about that timing, you know, will, will that work? Or we're going to have influx of cars on the road, and, you know, it's, I know people have rights, but there is a safety aspect of this too, you know.
DOT can tell us load, I mean, the.
Yeah.
It's, it's certain times of the day, and I don't know how they calculate it by the time of the day or overall use of the road, but.
We've got some good plans.
They're not saturated by their, from what I understand, what their, the way they look at it, but I mean, it is at certain times of the day.
Yeah, and it, and it's true, you can.
But that's anywhere, I mean, it, it didn't stop at Effingham, as soon as you get to Chatham, it's the same thing, so.
I mean, it's, the five minute differential when you're leaving can make a massive difference in where that you're going.
Um, I.
And some of it's on them, you know, hey, leave five minutes, everybody, and that's what I do. But, you know, I just don't want to get to the point where, gosh, for two hours, I can't, you know, where do you, where do you? I mean, it's only, it's up to us to do something, we're the only people that can.
The problem is, is, you know, everybody goes to work from seven to nine, but I mean, say Gulfstream, the biggest employer, they have shifts starting at, I think, four AM, bringing people in to, to help with that, so.
Well, where I'm at, the, the main complication is when we interject school times with work times.
Right, I agree with that.
Then it's like, it's crazy.
Again, I don't know how we work around that.
Yeah, but it's, uh, it's night and day where we're, where the school's at like yesterday, yeah, no problem, it's a right through. Today, the world changed, because everybody's back in school.
If more would utilize the school bus system.
That would be great, exactly.
That's a good point, that ain't going to happen.
We need, we need to talk to Nancy about better school buses and paying as people who have money to drive the buses.
My wife guilty is charged.
That's, that's increased taxes right there.
It'd be worth it, I mean, I want my kids to have a good professional driver if it's driving on the bus, and they do ride the bus from here to STEM, so.
Maybe we need more bike trails and sidewalks so they can walk in, I'm just going to be transparent, I'm a huge walk and bike to school advocate.
This is, this is, this is, this is a little different, uh, but just put on the radar, we talked about one time, these dirt mines being in I zonings, maybe, um, limiting, limiting them to state highways, so they don't damage our county roads, because you get them all over the place, I don't know if we're interested in looking at that? But it is a way to, um, keep our county roads from getting torn up.
I wonder what's the percentage of mines on state roads versus county, I mean, I know we have one like off Midland, we've got.
Or some places will have, will require a bond, so there's damage to, and I, and I have not looked at what your current.
That, that's another option, if we do allow county roads, somehow they, they pay for whatever damage.
Yeah.
Right, they pay for the damage, so.
I think that's more fair.
Put the bond up front though, if you really want to.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Get it in the bank.
We have truck routes in the county, maybe those are okay, you know, maybe.
Yeah, there you go, truck route, on truck routes or state highways.
If it's not a bond, to, yep.
I mean, your sand pits are going to be limited where they are just based on geology.
Soles, yeah.
Well, they are, but we, we have several that are just on county roads now.
Yeah.
That aren't up to truck standards, and so they start crunching the, the, the edges there, and, and then pretty soon we've got ruts and so forth. So I think having on, uh, truck routes, that's a higher, thicker, um, asphalt shoulder, thicker base and all, and then state routes would help us with our maintenance, so we probably need to, just inject that, if you could look at that maybe as well. Zone requirement.
On the list.
Okay. Anything else from, anyone for the good of the commission tonight, this workshop?
I think it's been good.
Yeah, it's been good, anything from our staff that needs to interject? Lee, did you hear anything that concerns you tonight that we might have got off base on?
No, I'm good.
It sounds good, all right, anything from those who came to listen that want to make a comment, uh, thoughts? Interject things?
I have one question, is that all right?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Yeah, probably should come up to the.
Brett Bennett, uh, you mentioned, I think in the R three, that the, the changes would only come into play, uh, or they would not affect projects that were in review, I think was how it was stated, I just want to clarify that of, because there are some, for instance, I'm working on a project now that's a B three multifamily, that's in design, moving forward, and just curious when and how these changes may come into play, and do they impact those kind of projects? It's just something we need to know.
Yeah, we, we had a, we, we, we had like six or seven that were in the works, we've already approved those B threes is what you're asking. So, do they develop under the new zoning or the old zoning, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I mean, it's currently zone B three and in design.
But we've changed some things in the B three, or changing some things, so the question is, when the developer brings it to us, does it have to meet the new R three? Or is it the old R three?
Old R three. If he's already applied, isn't that what we decided, if they had already applied?
They weren't even applied, it's, it's previously zoned.
We've already done it, we, we, we.
You can't, you couldn't do that, they come under one and then, you know, change everything they do.
I'm agreeing, but I think.
The moratorium said no new zonings, which made sense, you weren't going to zone any more projects B three.
Right, is this a zoning that we heard during that time, because we, we actually listened to about six.
It's been zoned, I think, back, you mentioned the Goshen apartments, it's been zoned back before.
Yeah, I don't think we.
It's been zoned a long time ago, now they're wanting to do something.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, property's recently been purchased under the B three zoning.
The pretense of.
And it's under design as we speak. And the B three's going to change to some mixed use, is what I read a little bit of, it's already under design.
So Lee, is that something you can ask if, if they had already given us a design? If they haven't given us a design yet, can we hold them to the B three design that we're approving?
I just need to look and see the timing of everything, I would like to know the dates, I know we're kind of speculating right now on when, when it happened and when it was rezoned. But yeah, I can definitely give you an opinion on that, it's just not right now.
Just a question, I don't know, I don't expect the answer right now, it's just something to think about.
Yeah, I think if you can put that together so we can get it leaked, because we need to let you know where that's at, and other developers as well. You know, my hope is that if they haven't presented a design to us, we might could hold that design to the new standards, it's still going to be B three. But it maybe we can't, and maybe that's going to be all the old, and that's what Lee can look at and determine for us.
I think there's a definitive legal answer to that, I just, we just don't know what it is yet, and whatever it is, it is.
Yeah, I was just trying to find the two options, one is it's going to be the old zoning, other, if they've already got design approved by us under the old, they probably could move forward. That's actually three things you got to look at, and then the other is if they haven't had any design, it's just been zone B three and they just sold it to somebody else, and we get it approved before they give design to us, then perhaps it can be restricted to the new, so there's three things to look at there. There's three things to look at, it's a good question, maybe we can get that resolved before the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, seeing no one else, I'll have a motion to adjourn this workshop, and we'll, um, take a break before we start our meeting.
So move.
So.
Motion by Mr. Delo, seconded by, uh, Mr. Loper, to adjourn the meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, and we are adjourned. So we got about, about twenty.